Public comment, so if there's anyone who wants to speak on something not on the agenda, this is the time to do that. And if you're going to speak, please go to the microphone because that connects us to FCTV and to the public so that they can hear you. Please say your name clearly and state your business and then go ahead and say what you want to say. Is there anyone who wants to speak during public comment period? No. In that case, first I want to make a correction to the agenda. It may not affect many of you, but it might affect somebody who is here. So let me take a minute to do this. It was an error on probably my part. Due to an error in drafting tonight's agenda, the draft motion for the application of Jane's S. Hall, no, on behalf of Priscilla Wynn trustee, definitive plan modification application to make a roadway and utility improvement at 045 Hall Lane and 345 Old Barnstable Road won't be heard tonight, but it will be heard at our next meeting. Sorry. I hope that didn't ruin your evening. Paul, minutes.
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of the minutes of January 28th, 2025, as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First on our agenda, approval not required. The applicant is Lars Berggren. A plan of land to combine two lots into one at 33 Martin Road, filed February 4th, deadline February 25th, so pretty soon an A and R. Who is speaking on that? Anyone?
Madam Chair, if I may, there's no one here to speak on that. However, I can speak to it.
Would you?
As you described, it's two lots being merged together, both with the requisite frontage in the zoning district, the AGA zoning district. And so with that, I recommend that you endorse the planist's presentation.
I need that we...
I just have a question. Is this putting two dwellings on one lot?
It is not.
It looked, okay, because it looked, there's buildings that they're merging, but they're not dwellings.
Correct.
So we're not creating a non-conforming...
That's correct.
Okay, I'm all set. I couldn't tell if it was a dwelling or not.
Any other questions? Is there a second?
Yeah, we did seconded.
Oh, we already did it? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, version is all set. Tonight we have a decision on the site plan review application to construct an attached accessory dwelling unit at 58 Maravista Avenue Extension. Stephen Devlin. Mr. Devlin here or his representative?
They're not. No, we don't.
We've seen this before.
We have, we have, you never know. So Bob, if you would go ahead, please.
Okay, draft, February 10th, 2025. Motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of Michael McCarthy for the construction of an attached accessory dwelling unit located at 58 Maravista Ave. Extension under Section 240 12.2 Site Plan Review of the Zoning Bylaw. Site plan, building elevation and floor plans with the following findings. Proposal general: the applicant is proposing to construct a 616 square foot one-bedroom accessory dwelling unit above the existing attached two-car garage. The 616 square foot accessory dwelling unit will be 37.75% of the principal dwelling, which complies with Section 249.1(c)(5) of the zoning bylaw. Proposal parking: submitted site plan shows a two-car garage and a paved driveway which together provide the necessary space for the required parking for both the principal dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit. Proposal architectural style, building elevations, floor plans, the existing dwelling floor plans show a bedroom being converted to a den without a door on the first floor to satisfy the requirement of Section 249.1(c)(8) of the zoning bylaw. But utter in public Board general finding, department reviews: the town of Falmouth departments have reviewed and commented on the above-mentioned application and the planning board finds that the application has adequately addressed the comments. Board general finding, building code and zoning review: the planning board's review and approval does not include building code and zoning review and the board defers to the building commissioner. Board general findings, compliance with ADU and site plan review bylaws: the board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements of Section 240-9.1 and 240-12.2 of the zoning bylaw. Conditions, standard condition, modifications: the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Standard condition, stormwater: the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property about its or public rights away. Three, utilities: any connections or alterations to public utilities would require a permit from the appropriate town departments. Four, the applicant shall see the engineering division for address assignment for the new building prior to applying for a building permit. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this building per Section 99-1 of the Town Code. Five, the project shall meet all applicable standards set forth in the building code as determined by the building commissioner. Six, ADU rental: the rental period should not be less than six months and weekly monthly rentals, so-called summer rentals, are expressly prohibited. Neither principal dwelling nor accessory dwelling units shall be used as commercial accommodations at any time. Seven, standard condition, lapse pursuant to Section 240-12.2 of the zoning bylaw: the site plan review decision shall lapse three years from the date it is granted if substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced, except for good cause. The determination of good cause shall be made by the planning board. Eight, street opening permit: the applicant shall obtain the required street permits for this project and post any required bond with the engineering division before the start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work approved by the engineering division in any approved permit.
And that's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Can I ask a general question about ADUs?
Sure.
My understanding is the state has changed the law drastically and our bylaw doesn't comport with it. So how are we dealing with that as we go forward when somebody's trying to design something and they want to go by the state law, but our bylaw doesn't until we vote it to do that sometime in April? What, how does that work?
We already changed it in November.
We changed it in November?
We're just waiting for the Attorney General.
Okay, that's what we haven't had. Okay, so it is, so the modification's in place, we're just waiting for the ratification. Thank you. That explains a lot.
Right, we did it in November. Okay, up next, something that we've been waiting for. These are, the first is about the YMCA on Brickhill Road, dealing with parking, and the second is about the entire building. And some time ago, we took up reading, believe it or not, an abbreviated version of the decisions, just to make it haster. But tonight, we're going to extend that because of the public interest in this particular project. So more of the decision will be written into the record. Whether we write it, read it all in or not, the whole decision is part of the record, the public record. You can always get it in the planning office and online anyway. But tonight, you'll hear more of it than you otherwise would have. So we had asked for, the planning board heard this thoroughly, we thought, and we asked for a positive decision, and we have one. Bob, could you read that?
Okay, I've got, too, I've got one for the site plan. Is that the one first?
Parking is up first.
That's a special permit. Okay, so that one's first. Draft, February 10th, 2025. Motion that the planning board vote to approve the application of Cape Cod Young Men's Christian Association, Inc. under Article 14, Section 240 14.1i5b of the zoning bylaw for a special permit to allow parking in the front yard of the premises located at 487 Brickhill Road. Findings, property description and current state: the property consists of newly-created 6.15 acre lot that is located in agricultural AAAGAA zoning district, the water resource protection overlay district, and the wildlife corridor migration area one overlay district. The lot is located north of 485 Brickhill Road property, home to the Christ Lutheran Church, and is currently undisturbed vegetated land. Proposal general: the applicant, Cape Cod Young Men's Christian Association, Inc., is applying to the planning board for a special permit under Section 240-14.1l5b of the zoning bylaw to allow 159 parking spaces in the front yard of the subject property. The entire project includes 176 space parking lot with 11 accessible spaces and four electric vehicle charging stations located between the existing Christ Lutheran Church, number 485 Brickhill Road, and the proposed YMCA facility, of which 142 spaces will be reserved for the YMCA and 34 will be reserved for the church. Through a recorded parking and utility easement, a total of 92 spaces will be shared by the two uses. This special permit will allow 159 of the 176 parking spaces to be located in the front yard of the lot. A small portion of the parking area, 17 spaces, are not located in front of the proposed building and therefore are not included in the special permit decision. Permitting history: the planning board issued a site plan review approval on February 11th, 2025, for the development of the 68,470 square foot YMCA recreational and educational facility along with 19,470 plus or minus square foot of outdoor areas. On August 8th, 2024, the project received a development of regional impact, DRI, decision from the Cape Cod Commission, CCC. Adequacy of the site in terms of size for the proposed use: the planning board finds the size of the site to be adequate. The submitted site plan shows the proposed 68,470 square foot building, 19,470 square foot feet of outdoor areas, 176 space parking lot, and all of the associated septic and stormwater collection facilities, all fitting on the 6.15 acre lot without infringing on neighboring properties. Suitability of the site for the proposed use: the planning board finds the site suitable for the proposed use. The existing zoning district allows a private club not conducted for profit through a special permit. The site is large enough to accommodate the proposed use and is consistent with and supporting of the surrounding land uses. Impact on traffic flow and safety: the planning board finds the impact on traffic flow and safety to be acceptable. The traffic impact study indicated that the proposed project is not expected to have significant impact on the overall traffic operation within the study area. Specifically, the site driveway is anticipated to operate at acceptable levels during both peak hours under the peak conditions, and the project includes a number of transportation mitigation measures. Impact on neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas: the planning board finds no impact on neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas. The proposed project will be located behind the Christ Lutheran Church and rectory approximately 600 feet back from Brickhill Road, which will effectively shield the project from the roadway. Adequacy of method of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage: the planning board finds the method of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage to be acceptable. The property is located within the Long Pond watershed and the application includes the treatment of wastewater with a new onsite innovative alternative treatment system designed to handle 7,600 gallons per day, GPD, of flow. Additionally, the application includes extending an eight-inch cement-lined ductile iron water main from the intersection of Brickhill Road into the site for water use and a stormwater management system designed to direct water runoff from impervious surfaces into rain gardens, vegetated swales, and underground infiltration devices. Adequacy of utilities and other public services: the planning board finds that the site to have adequate utilities and other public services. The property is served by municipal electric, telephone, cable, and internet infrastructure. The proposed project includes a 20-foot wide fire lane around the rear and sides of the building and two fire hydrants located near the building for future fire prevention services. The effect of the proposed project on the adequacy of the supply of affordable housing in the town, the planning board just finds no direct effect on the supply of affordable housing in town is, this is not a residential use. However, the project will provide a number of programs which will directly benefit families and residents in the area, such as after-school activities, daily childcare services, and recreational activities and lessons. But utter in public comments: the board received three letters of support and several positive comments from the public during the board's public hearing. The property of the abutting lot noted concern regarding proximity of the proposed driveway to the newly-constructed residential development, and the applicant will be working on providing additional screening between the two properties. Departments review: the town of Falmouth departments have reviewed and commented on the above-mentioned applications, and the planning board finds that the applicant has adequately addressed the comments. Building code and zoning review: the planning board's review does not include building code and zoning review, and the board defers to the building commissioner. Board general finding, compliance with special permit decision criteria: the board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements of Section 240 12.1e of the zoning bylaw. Therefore, given the above and the conditions to be imposed below, the planning board finds that the applicant, application for a special permit to allow for parking in the front yard will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter and that the proposal will not have adverse effects which overbalance its beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town. Conditions: the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Two, lapse pursuant to Section 240 12.1l of the zoning bylaw: this special permit shall lapse three years from the date it is granted if substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced, except for good cause shown, or in the case of a permit for construction, if the construction has not begun by that date, except for good cause shown. Determination of good cause shall be made by the planning board as they are the special permit granting authority.
Second. Which has been ran and seconded?
Madam Chair, just one direction. Sorry to interrupt. It is the finding related to the effect on affordable housing. I just want to note that it's not daily child care services, it's daily child watch services. So we'll make that amendment before it goes final.
So from childcare to child watch?
Child watch.
So making up.
What's the difference?
If you would ask, if you want.
We discussed this.
I'm kidding.
Just wanted to make that amendment.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah.
All.
I noticed the agenda of the night's meeting mentions in two places that the address is 485 Brickhill Road. My understanding it's 487, which is reflected in the, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
For, just for the record and for the public's knowledge, so they originally applied under 485 Brickhill because they, the lot was the Christian, like, Christ Lutheran Church. They then submitted an A and R which separated that lot and created 487. That is the lot which the YMCA is located in, 487.
But the 487 is correct.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Really good one as well. So, all in favor?
Aye.
We have a Y. This is really going to be great. Yeah, but our Y will have a parking space. Now we have a motion about the Y itself.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Just a procedural item. As you may have noted, the decision deadline timeframe had previously extended, so we requested that the applicant submit in writing to formally request your decision deadline to allow for tonight for you to make that decision. It might just be prudent to read that into the record so that we're procedurally okay and then read in the draft.
Here it is. Please accept this email as a formal request to extend the planning board's site plan review decision deadline until February 14th, 2025. Don't hesitate. Let me know if there are any questions or issues with this request. Thank you. Is there anyone with a problem with that? Is there a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's extended. Okay, now, Bob, I'm going to read it yourself.
Draft, February 10th, 2025. Motion that the planning board votes to approve the application of the Cape Cod Young Men's Christian Association, Inc. for the construction of a 68,470 square foot YMCA recreational and educational facility located at 487 Brickhill Road under Section 240 12.2 Site Plan Review of the Zoning Bylaw. Site plans: YMCA Cape Cod Brickhill Road, 487 Brickhill Road, West Falmouth, Falmouth YMCA, 487 Brickhill Road, Falmouth. Sheeps, I don't need to read those.
No.
No. Findings, property description and current state: the property consists of a newly-created 6.5 acre lot that is located in the agricultural AAAGAA zoning district, the water resource protection overlay district, and the wildlife corridor migration area one overlay district. The lot is located north of the 485 Brickhill Road property, home to the Christ Lutheran Church, and is currently undisturbed vegetated land. Proposal general: the applicant is proposing to construct a 68,470 square foot YMCA recreational and educational facility along with 19,470 plus or minus square feet of outdoor areas and a shared parking lot on newly-created 6.5 acre parcel designated as Lot 2B. The new two-story building will include two indoor swimming pools, locker rooms, a child watch room, gathering rooms, exercise studios, office suites, open fitness areas, and a gymnasium with running track. Meanwhile, the outdoor, meanwhile, the outdoor activity areas adjacent to the building will include an exercise studio, activity yard, and a children's play area. Additionally, the proposed project will create a community activity center that includes aquatics, wellness, teen intergenerational, youth, and family programs and services. The facility will include space for the Community Health Center of Cape Cod, Inc., to help ensure people in the region will have access to programs and services that focus on health prevention and wellness. The project received a development of regional impact, DRI, decision from the Cape Cod Commission on August 8th, 2024. The subject lot was created through an approval not required plan endorsed by the planning board in October 2024. Originally, the site consisted of one lot having approximately 9.8 acres, 4,428, 714,000 square feet that contain the Christ Lutheran Church and a rectory building. Through the A and R process, two lots were created: a 6.16 acre parcel of vacant land intended for the proposed YMCA facility, and a 3.69 acre lot containing the church and rectory, both having the requisite frontage on Brickhill Road. Parking, the application includes a 176 space parking lot with 11 accessible spaces located between the existing church and the YMCA center. A portion of this lot, 90 spaces, will be shared by the church and the YMCA through a recorded parking utility easement submitted with this application. The applicant requested a by right 25% parking reduction pursuant to Section 240 14.1e of the zoning bylaw for a total of 162 spaces. Additionally, the applicant intends to further reduce the required parking by 20 spaces by applying for a special permit from the zoning board of appeals pursuant to Section 240 14.1e. With approval of the special permit, the total parking on the site will include 176 space, 142 for the YMCA, and 34 spaces for the church. 92 of those spaces will be shared between the two uses. Access egress, traffic, bike, pedestrian conditions: the project includes a 520 plus or minus foot driveway starting at the southwest corner of the lot off of Brickhill Road, continuing north along the west side of the property, and terminating with a drop-off bus loop located in front of the proposed building. 20-foot wide gravel fire lane is provided around the entire proposed building for the fire truck access and circulation. The site distance analysis included in the traffic impact study prepared for the CCC DRI process indicated that both the minimum stopping and intersection site distances are exceeded at the site driveway entrance on Brickhill Road. Additionally, the traffic impact study indicated the proposed project is not expected to have a significant impact on the overall traffic operations within the study area. Specifically, the site driveway is anticipated to operate at a level of Service D or better during both peak hours under the peak conditions. The project includes transportation mitigation measures, including one, transportation demand management program, carpool, parking spaces, posting transit schedules, et cetera. Two, 10 bicycle parking spaces. Three, internal sidewalk network. And four, traffic signal and signage upgrades at the Brickhill and Gifford Street intersection. Proposal water: the proposed project is located with a long pond watershed, one of the town's many freshwater ponds, and the only public surface water supply source. The application includes extending an eight-inch cement-lined ductile iron water main from the intersection of Brickhill Road into the site with two fire hydrants near the building. The water department has indicated that all water main extension work, water service connections, and the hydrant connections will need to be approved prior to excavation, that no water meters will be installed until all fees for water services have been paid, that a water main base easement will be required for them to operate water shut-off valves and fire hydrants, and an ASB plan will be required upon completion of all work. Wastewater: the applicant proposes to treat wastewater with a new onsite innovative alternative treatment system on the north end of the property designed to handle 7,600 gallons per day of flow. The applicant and the town agreed to an assignment of groundwater discharge rights for the sole purpose of ensuring compliance with the sewage flow restrictions of the water resource protection overlay district. The new innovative alternative system will be subject to Board of Health approval. Stormwater: the application includes a stormwater management system designed to direct water runoff from impervious surfaces into rain gardens, vegetative swales, and underground infiltration services. As the project involves over an acre of land disturbance, a stormwater management permit from the Department of Public Works Engineering Division is required. Landscaping and lighting: the majority of the project site will require clearing and regrading to support the development. However, the applicant proposed to permanently protect approximately 1.23 acres of undisturbed land through conservation restriction and provide a wildlife migration corridor along the site's westerly boundary. Landscape plans include a number of drought tolerant native species distributed throughout the site and several nature-based stormwater solutions. The application, the applicant has committed to working with the abutting property owner to address concerns related to additional screening between the two lots. The town's Marine and Environmental Services Division has approved the applicant's creation of a wildlife corridor on the western boundary of the site and has encouraged the setting of bounds to help with future encroachment enforcement. The lighting plan shows a combination of lighting features, poles, wall packs, and bollards that will provide ample lighting for the parking area. bollards that will provide ample lighting for the parking areas, the building's main interest, and along the building's exterior. Other, the application includes a roof-mounted solar photovoltaic system on the building and five EV charging stations in the parking area. Additionally, the structure will have an efficient building envelope design, energy-efficient lighting, and heating and cooling systems. The applicant indicated that snow will be plowed to the end of each aisle along the eastern side of the property. Abutter and public comments, the board received three letters of support and several positive comments from the public during the board's public hearing. The property of the abutting lot noted concern regarding the proximity of the proposed driveway to the newly constructed residential development, and the applicant will be working on providing additional screening between the two properties. Department overview, or review rather. The town and Falmouth departments have reviewed and commented on the above mentioned application, and the planning board finds that the applicant has adequately addressed the comments. Building code and zoning review, the planning board's review does not include building code and zoning reviews, and the board defers to that to the building commissioner. Compliance with site plan review bylaw, the board finds that the information provided by the applicant conforms to all the requirements of section two forty, twelve point two of the zoning bylaw. Conditions, standard conditions, modifications, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Two, stormwater, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property abutters of public right of way. Three, utilities, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town departments. Four, erosion and sediment control, construction of this project shall follow the town soil erosion and sediment control standard condition document which can be found on the engineering division's page of the town's website. Five, street opening permits, the applicant shall obtain an approved street opening permit and post any required security with the engineering division before the start of construction. Six, building code, the project shall meet all applicable standards set forth in the building code as determined by the building commissioner. Seven, addressing, the applicant shall see the engineering division for addressing assignment for the new building prior to applying for a building permit. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post this address for the building per section ninety-nine dash one of town code. Eight, write of others, the board approval of the site plan review application does not constitute and should not be seen, or should not be deemed or construed as an approval of any activity which may interfere with or violate rights of other parties. Nine, standard condition lapse pursuant to section two forty, twelve point two of the zoning bylaw, this site plan review decision shall lapse three years from the date it is granted if substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for good cause. The determination of good cause shall be made by the planning board. Ten, stormwater management permit, the applicant shall obtain a stormwater management permit with the Department of Public Works Engineering Division prior to any land disturbance. Eleven, project specific condition addressing, the applicant shall seek approval from Falmouth Fire Rescue for address posting. Twelve, project specific conditions, bus loop parking signage shall be installed in the bus drop-off lane, drop-off loop that indicates that no parking is allowed in that area.
Thank you, Bob. That's made and seconded, is there any discussion?
I have one minor question. On top of page two, where it refers to permits, if I may? It says that the project, the project received development of regional impact decision, but it doesn't say what that decision was, and it doesn't refer to it further. Should it say a positive decision? Make sure there's no misunderstanding there?
I suppose it could.
But just saying a decision doesn't say what the decision was.
I don't recall the exact wording in the decision, whether or not it was all positive. I suspect it was, but I would hesitate on adding that language until we really need it, but I think it makes the statement that they've received a DRI decision.
If yours says right what that says, fine.
Any other comment, question? All in favor?
Aye.
So congratulations again, one step closer to having the Y for the town. It's really wonderful that you're doing that, and we all appreciate it a great deal. Thank you.
I know there's no comment, but I just wanted to say thank you for the board. This is our fourth evening before you on this matter. We've been at this project for quite some time, and as far as I can calculate, we have one step left after this, so we really appreciate your thoughtfulness, your review, your comments, and we believe that this is going to be an excellent project for this town, so thank you all for your time.
Well, and thank you very, very much. As I understand it, you're just about close to the funding.
Very close to the funding, not there yet, as Stacy would want to make sure, I know. We're not, we're not quite there, but, but we, we have come quite a long ways, and, you know, we are scheduled to be before the zoning board on Thursday, March twenty-sixth, and the special permit from the zoning board for a few different matters is really the last step in the process before I think we'll be able to move forward with the building permit.
It's going to be wonderful. Thank you very much, and you're welcome. Next.
Madam Chair, please comment, too. This has been a very lengthy project and a very important project, and I'd like to thank the cooperation not only from the applicant and his legal staff, but from planning department as well. It's been an important project, we were in favor of it, but there's a lot of issues to discuss, and there's good cooperation all around. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.
True.
I'm glad you agree.
Moving, oh, Melinda, did you want to just get in the next, you're putting up Mr. Marsh.
Plan out, yeah.
Steven Marsh, up next, definitive plan application, and it looks like we're, we're close to finishing on this, to create a three-lot subdivision at zero old Barnstable Road, and the deadline for completing this is February twenty-eighth.
Yes, good evening, Steve Marsh, I'm the applicant for the Catawba Lane Extension. The last time I was here, I needed to, I had my marching orders to get someone to hold the conservation restriction.
Yeah.
We've had, I'm going to give you the brief real quick, down and dirty. We did finally get somebody, the three-hundred committee did vote, and I believe that they sent information to Jed confirming that, once that was done and we worked out a few bugs, we made the changes to the plans for the engineering. We didn't hear anything back right away, and then we submitted for the stormwater with DPW, so that's where we're at. We've done everything that we said we were going to do, and we're excited about working with the three-hundred committee, so the majority of the property will be protected.
It seems to have been amicably settled. Is there any question or discussion from the board? Any further public comment on this? Yes, please.
I'd like to thank Jed for sharing the updated plan, and I did take a look at that. It's from Steve's engineer. One thing I'm worried about is stormwater runoff. As I stand in the roadway, the roadway around the Catawba Lane cul-de-sac was excavated originally, and so it's down gradient of the subject property. There are, there is evidence of stormwater management in the plans, but I'm worried about flooding. It's a long driveway, it might be two hundred feet long, and then there's a T, so that's all impervious surface. It's not shown on that slide there, but I think Jed's aware of, of this. So I'm just curious about the stormwater management plan and, and the potential for flooding, and how, how's that going to be mitigated? Yeah, I already have a problem right now with failed drywells, so this would turn into a pond. Takes hours to drain.
Respond to that concern. Mr. Marsh?
We submitted a plan that addresses that particular issue. See if I can, is there a way to switch that?
Just scroll down.
Oh. Great. So, right in this area here, you'll see there's a, an area that it's basically cultech chambers to accommodate the runoff. So, and it's, it's, it's in review right now with DPW to, to address that. So, but there's a huge area, that's an enormous area to take care of, essentially a driveway, and the area that we plan on paving there.
It does look big.
Yeah, it's huge. For one house, it's a little ridiculous, it's really, it's actually more expensive than the Sept. But we're doing it, so it should accommodate it, but we're, we're still waiting on the review from DPW anyway.
So, just for clarity's sake, because this application involves land area disturbance of over an acre, that automatically triggers a requirement to obtain a stormwater management permit from the DPW engineering division. So all stormwater review for this application is being handled by the engineering division, and the applicant will receive a permit from them directly, not from the board. But inside of your potential positive motion and decision is a condition that states the applicant would need to obtain that stormwater management permit before obtaining a building permit or doing any land disturbance on the property.
Well, the DPW review?
Correct.
The written agreement with the three-hundred committee would be conditioned.
Correct.
Any other conditions?
There are actually other, other, you know, that we will not develop parcels A and B, they'll be held in perpetuity and protected, as well as the wildlife corridor.
Wouldn't that be part of the three-hundred?
It is, yeah. Yep, yep.
Yeah.
So, that's it. I mean, it's, I think we've, essentially with the exception of Ron's concerns, but there'll be a, a review and a permit that has to be issued by DPW for that, but we've done everything else.
Okay.
And for clarity's sake, when they do, when the DPW, the engineering division issues that permit, they do analyze the entire application site. So to the board's concern, they will be analyzing the ability for the stormwater management system to handle all new stormwater generated by the entire driveway, roadway, et cetera, everything.
Just as a matter of point, I know that this issue had come up prior, and the engineering department actually had me go back out and retest to make sure that the soils could accommodate that, and that actually became a little bit bigger.
As a result?
As a result of that.
Anything else, comments the board wants to bring up before we ask for a positive decision? Oh, I'm sorry, further public comment. Mr. Raiber?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Kurt Raiber, and I live on Monhegan Road, right opposite the end, the southerly end of Catawba. And had a chance to review the plans. I think it's a big step forward from where we were many months ago. However, I did notice that the leaching area for the drainage did get bigger in this recently revised set of drawings. To me, it looks really big, but moreover, it's really close to the property line, and it's pretty close to Carol Hare, who is the abutter just below it on the plan, to her residence, so I was wondering, did it have to be there? And secondly, I believe last time we were here, there was quite a few questions that came back from engineering and water, and so I was just wondering, have all those issues been answered?
Well, not directly for the stormwater, because they're still working on the review for the stormwater management, but the latest engineering referral, which you all have in your packets, did address or itemized each one of the issues that had been brought up before, and they have been addressed. However, there's are some items that the board has to consider tonight, so when you're ready, I could certainly go through those for you, and we can have a discussion with the applicant.
Do you want to like a copy of that?
I believe they have a copy, but if not...
I have it in my email, yeah. So, I, I was just thinking that perhaps that leaching area could be more linear or parallel with the driveway on the center lot rather than in the woodland area directly next to my neighbor Carol Hare's house, right next door to our living room. Thanks.
Mars, do you want to comment on the location?
It has to do with slope.
Probably topography.
Well, the property's pretty flat, for the most part. I, I spoke to Mrs. Hare, she has no problem with any of this. I did meet with her. Again, that was, it was increased based on the last conversations that we had with the abutters. It's really the only place for it, it's right at the end of the road, and you'll never see it, because it's in the ground. Once it's, it becomes part of the landscape, you'll never see it. It's not like it's a huge structure where you're going to drive by and go, oh my God, that's, it's in the ground, it's buried.
It's underground, and if the concern is flooding in the road, it would have to be near the road.
Yeah, exactly. So it's, it's the, you know, it's the shortest distance, it's taken care of not just our work, but the, the work in the roadway that's failed. We have to remember that, too, that, that drainage system is in disrepair, so we're, we're correcting that.
Anyone else from the public? The board member? I think we're ready to ask for a positive decision.
Not yet. We've got some other things to go over.
Jed?
Right, so if I may, part of the engineering's referral, which is a minor point, but I think it's worth bringing up in the public session so that you can make an assessment of it. As part of the requirement when a definitive plan is proposed within a wildlife corridor overlay district, part of that requirement includes the submission of a preliminary cluster subdivision plan, and for those of you who are unfamiliar, it's essentially a subdivision plan that is not standard, you cluster the lots close together and you preserve open space. Now, that typically involves a number of building lots, which of course this does not, and so therefore, essentially you need to grant, or you should grant relief from that requirement, noting the obvious that, that does not involve the development of multiple lots.
Do we need a separate vote for that?
I would recommend it. That and essentially giving the applicant an idea of the list of waivers that they've asked for and your, essentially your position on granting those waivers, so that we can work with the applicant afterward, if you are not in favor, for example, of the width of the road that's being proposed, and you are not in favor of granting that waiver, we need to know that in advance so that we can work with the applicant to adjust plans if necessary, and then they can come back with adjusted, adjusted plans.
Okay, and those materials will come to us at our next meeting.
Well, I can walk through the waivers with you that I have on file currently, and I can work with the applicant tonight to sort of go through those things, but I figured first and foremost, granting relief on that requirement of the wildlife corridor overlay district is paramount, because technically, it would be a requirement, but it wouldn't make any sense to actually require it.
Is that a waiver, really? Is that the same thing as a waiver?
You're essentially granting relief, there's no specific area within the bylaw to grant said waiver, but you'd be granting it relief, we put it into it, into your decision finding, provided that you're okay with that.
Want to make a motion?
Sure. Okay, so I move that the board grant relief to the cluster requirement for wildlife corridor relief for this subdivision requirement.
Yep.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There we have it.
Terrific.
The waivers?
Right, so what I have on file for the list of waivers are the requirement to submit a traverse table for the perimeter survey, so I believe the applicant is requesting waiver for that. I also have a waiver from the width alignment and grades, because the applicant's requesting that the roadway width be nineteen feet where twenty-two feet would be required. Also, a cross-section, typical cross-section of the street layout, a waiver from that, simply to allow for that two nine-foot travel lane layout that they're proposing where typically eleven feet is required. Then I have a waiver for the installation of sidewalks, grass plots, street trees, and streetlights. I believe that's everything for the list of waivers.
Does any of that come as a surprise to the neighbors? Or a problem?
And?
If I may, yeah, no, I know we had discussed that at some of the meetings with regard to lights with the road and everything, so, and that was, it was all addressed.
So no issues with the board on those list of waivers?
No.
No?
Great.
So if, at our next meeting, which is what, the twenty-eighth?
It would be the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth?
Yes.
We can have a positive motion, and you'll be one step ahead. Great, thank you. I want to comment on all the work done with the neighbors and the attention everyone's paid to it. I hope that it, that it signals an amicable neighborhood.
Yeah, I'm pretty excited about it.
Yeah, great.
Madam Chair, procedural item, you just need to... Chair, procedural items, you just need to close the hearing.
Oh, I move that the hearing be closed.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all. Do you want to give me a minute to clear the room? We're moving from a hearing to a public meeting, a little bit more relaxed. JJE C Development LLC, site plan review application to construct 10 two-bedroom apartments, five one-story structures at Forest Sandwich Road. We are very familiar with this project. This is the one beside Dunkin' Donuts, down by the administration building. Mr. Amen.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So for your record, I'm Bob Amen, Falmouth attorney. With me is Tom Bunker, BSS Design, engineering and land surveying firm, and Erica Scander of the applicant JJE C Development. So since the last meeting before the planning board, we've made a number of changes, improvements, if you will, to the plan in response to suggestions made by the planning board, and response to concerns of neighbors. So I'd like to go through what those changes are, and I think the best way to do it is with the plan that's in, on the screen now, and then go to the landscape colored plan. So the landscape plan will show you that the number of trees has been increased. I'll go to that so you can see it. Now proposing 92 new trees, and we've added a bunch of screening trees. In addition, the area of the proposed play area has been reduced, and the fencing around the play area has been moved, so it's now 15 feet away from the property line. So we've got a fence. It's going to be a chain link with black vinyl coating on it, and that will be 15 feet away from the property line. And we're showing additional screening trees to be planted between the fence and the property line, and there's room for more to be done if it's needed. The rows of parking in front of the residences, these rows, have been changed from 90-degree parking to be angled parking, and the traffic flow is shown as one-way. So here's the arrow showing one-way traffic with the parking spaces all being angled. We've removed two spaces which were in this area, which some people thought could be a conflict, and we've instead shown three parking spaces, parallel spaces near the front of the store, which is in this area. The present pavement is wide enough so that it only has to be made about two feet wider to accommodate these spaces, and still have ample one-way traffic flow in front of the That means we still have, even taking these spaces away, and we lose one space with the angled parking, we still have 39 parking spaces, which is one more than is required. I'll go back now to the, while we're there, one of the lights here is, the lighting has been rotated to better aim the illumination, and that's shown on the plan.
Excuse me, Mr. Amen, while you're on the landscape, could you show the part where there are the backyards of the new residences? How deep are those backyards?
Well, I'll go back, you'll only see that if we go back to the previous plan.
Doesn't show on the landscape?
Oh, you mean the backyards?
Slide that up. Here we go.
These, you're saying?
Yeah.
Right.
What you're saying? Tom, do you recall the distance of the setback?
The closest building? Yes, I can say that the closest setback is, it's a 10-foot setback, and so at this point for the shed is 10 feet to the property line. And it gets a wider setback towards the...
Everybody gets a terrace, a shed, and a little bit of grass. Right now, along here the road, there's a really nice hedge of mature trees there. Are you keeping that?
I think we'll keep anything we can keep.
Mm. They're good trees there.
We did add screening trees to this plan to try to close in any gaps. I note that these are really residential-scale buildings, not tall buildings, so it's no different than a residence next to any other residential property, but I note that the abutting property to the north is business-owned.
Tom, did you want to comment on the...
I mean, I'll comment at the end, or I can comment now. I mean, I was gonna...
Which way?
First of all, I want to announce that I performed a couple site visits out there, and some of the abutters were there while I was, while I walked around. I didn't make any promises. I listened to some of their concerns, which were some of the concerns they've already previously expressed here, about site and sound mitigation. I looked over the applicant's new changes, and I appreciate all the extra trees added for mitigation, along with the angled parking and many other changes. Thank you for that. But I have to say this. I would still like to see the play area. Can you go to the colored slide again, please? I would still like to see the colored, see the play area in the top left, reduced, more, or relocated, and I'll explain why. Last year, on Earth Day, April 22nd, 2024, our select board signed a rights-of-nature resolution for Falmouth in this very room. In support of that resolution, we should try to preserve the existing habitat for birds and animals that live on that site. They all play a role in the food chain and ecosystem out there. When I walked around, I noticed even the dead tree stumps and fallen limbs on the site serve as an animal's safe haven and food source. Also, clearcutting the existing trees and shrubs in the play area destroys the benefits of the tree's root system, which can absorb groundwater, and clearcutting destroys the tree's natural uptake of nitrogen. By keeping the play area undisturbed as much as we can, a dual role is served. We help to protect the habitat, which is aligned with the rights-of-nature resolution, and we protect the privacy of the abutters. That's what I want to say. And I also, I'm sure you've looked at and have a suggestion, but can we move that play area if we were to remove top unit, far left, number five, and move the play area over there, or put it just below that where unit six is? And I know some people say, hey, we're going to lose two units, but nothing's been approved. I still look at it as where we're gaining eight. So those are my two cents, and I think we should be good stewards, you know, regarding, you know, our environmental concerns here in Falmouth, and try to preserve as much of that play area as we can.
Thank you for reminding us of that. I really hadn't noticed that they had done that.
If I can just, I will comment on that and just mention a couple of other changes to the plan that have been made. In response to concerns particularly from the DPW, we're showing that the existing granite curbing would be extended orderly all the way to the curb cut. The sidewalk next to that new curbing would be rebuilt, there'd be a tactile ramp pad installed, and the same on the other side. The walkway we've shown would extend down to the street and turn to a tactile pad at the intersection. Although we don't propose to install granite curbing for the area north of the curb cut, nor extend the sidewalk in that area, because the sidewalk doesn't lead anywhere. There's no sidewalk on the, that side of Sandwich Road, the west side. We would put curbing, a Cape Cod berm, where there is no curbing presently along Sandwich Road. The plan doesn't show it, but of course, it'd be simple to have the applicant or the town paint a crosswalk between this area and the sidewalk across the way that has a path that leads up to the school administration building. The drainage has been revised to, with new calculations and some changes to the plan, new drainage calculations were submitted, and we think that those should satisfy the So in response to Mr. Zine's suggestions, I would remind the board that this business-owned lot allows lot coverage of 70% under the zoning bylaw, and our proposed lot coverage is 48.14%. It is substantially less than what is allowed. We're putting in, proposing to put in the play area because it was a request of boards. So I'd ask, and the idea of reducing the density, remember that this piece of property abuts the Mr. Cod zoning district. The zoning district, Mr. Cod ends at our property line. So right next door, we'd be allowed to have 20 units per acre. In the business zone, we're allowed to have, by special permit, Mr. Cod'd be by right. In the business district, not in Mr. Cod, the density allowed is six units per acre. We're proposing five units per acre. We don't know if we can afford to do this project, even with 10 units. Mr. Scander is getting numbers, but he doesn't know yet if we can even do this project. I think everybody agrees that creating apartments in the business district is something that's needed in Falmouth. 7% of our housing stock is rental compared to what's typical or recommended to be over And as I've said before, Mr. Scander's company, which has dozens and dozens of Dunkin' Donuts franchises, and employs many hundreds of people, knows firsthand the problems that its employees have finding housing on the Cape, including people in management positions who can't afford to live here. And we need this kind of housing. Now, we can eliminate the play area. We would still have this area here, and each one of the, of the units has a patio behind it, not a deep backyard, but again, this meets all the setback requirements. Or we could reduce the play area by some amount of area. I don't want to guess what that figure is. Maybe somebody should suggest. What would the planning board like to see?
Before we do that, let's see if Mr. Zine's idea has much support on the board.
How many subdevelopments require a play area?
I don't think they do.
I think that this is such a less-dense operation, a lot-coverage ratio, and I'm actually more concerned about kids having a place to play, safe than the animals. I think it's a perfect use of the site, and I, it's got good balance, and I don't think we should change anything.
John?
I just want to ask Jed, we're doing site plan review and design review. Is it in our purview to ask for a reduction of units? I think, I know when I was on the zoning board, we could, I don't know if it's in our purview, that's my question to you.
Yeah, I don't think it is. I mean, that's typically a use-type conversation that the zoning board appeals would have. However, when you are dealing with the site and specific characteristics of the site, and if, you know, perhaps there's more density on the site than you feel is appropriate, or it might create some sort of safety issue, it's certainly an opportunity to opine on it. It's a delicate balance, I guess is what I'm saying. So if there's, you know, specific concern with the site itself, as you deal with the outside of the buildings and the circulation patterns, Sophia.
Thank you.
I'm thinking, and what I'm thinking is something also that Bob mentioned about putting a crosswalk across Sandwich Road, however recognizing that that could be dangerous, because the school administration building is over there. There's a lot of property over there, including some playing fields, that would give the kids a heck of a lot more room to play than they'd have in that small park.
I think that's way outside our concern.
Of course it is. I just threw it out because it is a potential.
It's interesting, Paul.
If we're concerned about kids having a place to play.
My guess of the number of kids who are going to be living there.
Not many.
There's plenty of room for those kids.
Mm-hmm.
Paul?
When this came before us, there had four buildings along the north border, and I thought that was really pretty neat. A fifth building was added, and the result is that buildings are only 10 feet apart, and we're squeezing in a play area there. If you were to eliminate building six and spread the houses out a little bit, I think it would be a much more effective area. But then again, that depends on the economic viability of the project, and...
Mr. Dryer, your memory isn't quite accurate. What there were originally were three buildings with two of them with three units each, and one with five, a total of 11 units. This five duplex plan actually reduces the footprint of the buildings.
Still pretty dense, is the point.
Well, it's only five units.
Hold on, hold on. Lot coverage, this is nowhere near dense. This is almost half the lot. No, as a group, we're saying it's dense, it's dense, it's dense. It's ridiculously not dense. It's just a false...
What's ridiculous?
It's only 40% lot coverage, you're allowed 70. I don't, how can you argue a point that's so far off mathematically? This is the same zoning as we have on Main Street. It's B2 zoning. You want to change the zoning, but we don't change it here. We approve things that are made for zoning. They've accommodated us, they're down. The lot coverage ratio is ridiculously low. I don't even know how they could afford to do it, and to ask them for more is just crazy as a, we're not rewriting zoning here. That's not our job. I'm objecting to the word of density. I hear this word, density, density, density. I object.
I'm in favor of increase in density, there's no question about it. I don't really need the lecture, thank you. All I'm saying, you asked me for opinion, I gave an opinion. My opinion, I liked it before. They put the other item in for economic viability. If that's necessary, I'm not objecting to it. We need the housing, there's no question about it. I just, you asked me an opinion, and I gave it.
All right, now I'd like to give my opinion. I am very much in favor of this project, just as it is right now. I'm very glad to see that you've changed the angled parking. When Tom and I visited the site, my main concern was actually about... When Tom and I visited the site, my main concern was actually about saving those bushes. It looked to me as if we're going to work, as it is, and I want to thank you for the accommodations that you've made to us so far, very, very much so. So, I don't support Ms. Zine's desire to change that play area, I like it the way it is. Have you finished your presentation?
Well, I have, also want to comment on an issue that has come up, perhaps more at the Board of Appeals, but I think it's been mentioned here by neighbors. There's concern about the length of the drive-through queue, and it's been suggested that cars back out to the street and even into Sandwich Road. And it's been suggested that that even happens at this time of year. Well, it turns out that there is a security camera on the front of the building, which records all movement in front of the building. I wish we had it going all the way back to last summer, but we have it since December 8, right up to a few days ago. And this is the snapshot from the front of the building, and although it's a little hard to see if you don't study it a bit, this is the queue of cars. Car there, car there, car there, car there. There's a car here, and there's a car leaving at the intersection. This even shows the curb cut. So, we have a way to tell if the traffic ever backs up, as far as it's been claimed to. This photograph at 9:04 on December 24, Christmas Eve, was the only occasion in the last two months that this is the farthest backup there's been. It doesn't even reach the proposed parking area for the residences. And so, this is incontrovertible. That is, we have photographic evidence of how far the queue is. I went back and I looked at the Board of Appeals' hearing and noted that the abutter, Mr. Figurito, was here, said specifically that at times he had difficulty exiting his driveway because of traffic backed up from the corner. He never said that the problem was the length of the queue at the Dunkin' Donuts. Now, this proof of the current conditions doesn't tell us that there haven't been occasions in the summer months when the queue has been longer. Dunkin' Donuts is analyzing their sales figures. They don't think it's possible that there has been backup to the corner. If it happens, it's, they think it's very rare. So, we think this project works. We think that it's a good place for the housing, and we don't think it's going to cause the impact. Remember that whatever traffic problem there is on Sandwich Road, whatever traffic problem there may be in the future because of substantial development out on Sandwich Road, whatever traffic there is because of the Dunkin' Donuts, it already exists. Some 200 trips in or out in a peak hour. But this housing, according to the Institute of Traffic Engineers study, creates 4.6 trips, and that's in and out in the peak hour. So, maybe in the morning, there are four trips out and one trip in. One trip out every 15 minutes, added to what's there. The impact of this project creating needed housing will not be significant. We can only create housing, we can only create it in the business district where it's allowed in some density by clearing areas. That's not entirely true. There are certainly situations where there are existing paved parking lots and so on. But what we're doing here, despite its impact on wildlife, despite removing trees, is, in this case, what we need to do to create a modest amount of housing. I think that employers are being encouraged, or should be encouraged, to think about providing housing for their employees and for others where they can in the business district. Can you put apartments on the second floor or the third floor of your building? Is there room to create a couple of apartments? Well, here, there is room. This is a two-acre site, and we can put in this really attractive, a lot of people have said it's, no problem with the design of the buildings and so on, and only have 42% lot coverage on the property. You know, I've been thinking about this particular use of this property for, ever since Dunkin' Donuts bought this property from Eastern Bank. And it really is a good project. And maybe we could reduce that play area a little bit, maybe save a few more trees, but neighbors have an opportunity to put in screening themselves. We can maximize the screening we can do. And I think the planning board's prepared to do this. I hope the Board of Appeals is prepared to do this, to get to yes on this project. And if we can make it as good as possible, better, well, we're all for that too. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other comment from the board before we turn to the public?
Just, I do want to add that, with that photo is an affidavit given by the loss prevention manager of the JJE C Development, confirming that she's reviewed the entire record. This is the only occasion in that period that traffic backed up even as far as it's shown.
Not far, it's actually quite a distance. Thank you. Anyone else from the board? John?
This past year, I constructed six apartments in these families, three duplexes, and they have a fenced-in grass area. There's two young children there, and they play out, they love having the outdoors to play in.
Not the first time.
I don't know if this should be reduced or not. I did a site visit there, and it seems to me that it's a great spot for it, as far away from Sandwich Road as you can get, and as safe as you can get, so.
It will be, it'll be quiet back there.
If there are children there, that's where they'll play.
Yeah. Any other comment?
Despite the fact that I said what Bob said, oh, you could put a path across Sandwich Road, no, that was really much tongue-in-cheek, it would be too dangerous. I don't like cutting down trees and all that sort of thing. However, what they have done in bringing it back in further and the landscaping around there, I think it's lovely. I think I like that right there.
They've got a big planted berm there and fenced, they've made a real effort to accommodate the neighbors.
Absolutely, and as was pointed out, and this is very true, the neighbors can also do some mitigation along there for themselves. But I think they've done an amazing job of pulling that back in and accommodating the neighbors as much as they could while still having a play area.
Paul?
I'm in favor of the project. I just wanted to get an opinion out, that's all.
That's good.
I think it's a good project, I always did.
Nothing else to add.
Another time, we'll go with you. Anyone in the public want to comment on this before we close the hearing? The meeting.
Good evening, Board. My name is Lori Lopes, and I am in a butter. And I just would like to raise a few concerns that I've had since the very beginning. First of all, every time we've had a meeting, the paperwork has been changed, the plans have been changed, nothing's been right. This says, I'm sorry, 10 two-bedroom apartments in five one-story buildings? That's not true, they're two-story. So, that's wrong on this paper. In the very first meeting, the very first plan with the three units like Mr. Dreier was speaking of, we showed up for that plans, and then they took those plans off, and they showed the new plan, the five units. Why was that even allowed? Why would you, why'd you even allow them to present those plans on that day?
Well, could I just say, one of the reasons, the reason really, for holding hearings is to get comments from the board, and to get comments from the abutters, really, but from the public, and to see, can we accommodate everybody? So that the role of the planning board is to assist the development of the town. That's what we're supposed to do. And we feel we can best assist it by preserving the character of the town within its zoning rules, and by accommodating the people who are going to live near it, and trying to make it be amicable. So, of course, if nothing changed from meeting to meeting, what would be the point? Why would we listen to one another unless people were willing to make changes? I mean, that's what happens.
Okay, but that's not what I asked. I was wondering why that was allowed to happen, because you went from one plan that us abutters came here prepared for and completely took that plan off and presented a whole new plan that probably should have gone a new application, a new, wouldn't that have to go and get a whole new, like, application? Wouldn't they have to pay a whole new fee? They drastically changed the, it wasn't small changes.
Mr. Ahmed, could you comment on that?
I don't want to interrupt.
Oh, I thought you finished.
Go ahead, please do.
There is an error in this week's agenda. It does refer to one-story buildings, which is not correct. There's been no prejudice to Ms. Lopes or to anybody else. She continues to go back to a meeting months ago with concerns that we reduce the number of units, reduce the square footage of the footprint, and of course, in the process of reducing the number of units, reduce parking requirements, and reduce the septic flow and so on. This was a reduction in the proposal. But in any case, she's come to every meeting, which, under the law, waives any objection to notice. I think that that issue of our reducing the project really should be a non-issue. We shouldn't be faulted for it. And, you know, we're trying to do a good project, and it takes an awful lot of work. The error in just a description of the building, so and so, that's had nothing to do with the applicant, and it's a, it's irrelevant.
This is a script that's made by the planning board and planning department. You should have caught it and done.
But there's been multiple of them from the very beginning, and still, you know, I really still haven't gotten an answer. But, and if you'd let Mr. Ahmed know that I never made any request about taking one of the buildings out or any like that. I've never made any of those requests, that was not me. So, there's that. So, I guess in closing, you know, none of us really like changing our developments, right? We don't like sell poles, we don't like develop, we don't like homes in our backyards. I don't like homes, not because it's going to reduce my property value, because I have no plan on ever selling my home, but I do like the way my backyard looks. It already has a beautiful, I don't have to mitigate it, it's already beautiful back there. But, I don't know, I'd like to thank you guys for nothing.
Any other comments? Now's the time. Okay, we're going to close the hearing, meeting, and?
I would, if I may, I would hold off on doing that just yet because the revised plans that Attorney Ahmed just went through, you have not received an engineering referral back on those plans yet. We've already started drafting a decision for you in anticipation of you asking us. Just trying to get ahead of you. But I would hold off on asking us to do anything until you see a referral from the engineering division.
Could I comment on that? Okay, fine, and I'm not going to turn you down. But you know, we're in very uncertain times. Right now, there's a financial issue, will they be able to do it? Is it feasible? And under the rules as we understand them now, yeah, it seems so. Who knows what those are going to be? I think the sooner we can get this out of the approval and permitting process and into construction and working, to get the extra housing for the town, the safer we are.
If you'd like us to have a draft motion for you at the next meeting, we could certainly do that.
Are you expecting an adverse engineering decision?
I'm not expecting adverse, but I don't want to put the cart before the horse. But we can certainly put the cart and the horse next to each other.
Good way to go.
And, you know, if I may, just, you know, I apologize, I missed that on the agenda. It was my error, so I take full responsibility for that one-story issue.
Really, I was just trying to, involving.
If anyone wants to come by the planning office to go through the plan with me, I'm happy to do so.
I would love to have a meeting.
I have a question also, when you get to it.
Blame it on the.
That's your, Mr. Ahmed, and then John, and then we'll move on.
Thanks, Madam Chairman, just a couple of comments. One, the Board of Appeals' continued hearing is two weeks from this Thursday. I don't know if you're meeting next week or not until the week after that, but if we, certainly would like to have a decision, site plan review decision issued right after that hearing, so it can be considered by the Board of Appeals. The other thing I wanted to say, and I had said this to a town planner earlier this week, you have two roles, really. One is site plan review, of course, and the other is you do get asked for a referral from the Board of Appeals. And so, I believe that if not in site plan review, then on the whole issue of density, the whole issue of use, I think that the planning board certainly can, and I think should, weigh in. In this case, I think that, I hope that the planning board, in its referral, if not in site plan review, would give a message to the Board of Appeals, and that is that creating rental housing in locations like this, where there's public transportation potential or existing nearby, in business districts and so on, is really a high priority. And so, that you would favor and urge the Board of Appeals to favor the creation of this type of housing, for rent, by the way. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Thank you. Jed, when I met with you earlier today, I mentioned to you that I had done a site visit, and we discussed Building Five, I believe, the location or screening. Could you enlighten me, was there going to be more screening, or the building was going to be adjusted? What was the?
So, if I may, the fifth building, which-
Just close to where the goats are, I think.
Correct. Let me just grab my site plan, because I just closed it. I believe at the introduction, Attorney Ahmed mentioned that they added some additional trees behind Building Five.
Just tap the screen so we can see it again.
May have logged you out by now. I was just going to say, I think the landscaping plan shows it appropriately, and I believe that Building Five on that site plan is furthest to the left, next or adjacent to the play area. There are what appear to be four shade, or not shade tree, screening trees proposed just behind it, a budding, which is shown on the plan as Lot Seven. So, Bob, if you could just scroll up just a hair. Yep. So, at the very top of the screen, there are four trees proposed behind that. So at the very top of the screen, there are four trees proposed behind that pervious patio to screen between five, Building Five and the adjacent property. Now, if you were referring to between the, what's shown on the plan as the goat pen...
I'm referring, is it Building Five to the left?
That's Building Six, the, the one by itself.
This is Building Five because the first, building number one is the store, the Dunkin' Donuts store.
Okay.
Two, three, four, five, six.
So I was discussing Building Six then.
Okay.
The screening, screening behind Building Six.
Yeah.
Also remember that, that the topography changes considerably and I guess it's a...
Six-foot ground?
Seven feet from here.
It is considerable, yes.
So these trees are going to have more of an impact even right away than you might think.
Impact because the building would be lower and the trees would be higher.
Because the building is lower, the building, the first floor is seven feet below this area.
Okay, just, I know it's close to Ms. Lopes' property, so, in fact, I said hi to her goats when I was there, so, didn't feed them though.
Good, thank you.
So you're, you're doing what you can to accommodate that situation?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You all set?
Good stuff.
I am.
Okay, I think that we can close now and move along, and we will get a positive decision from our next meeting with the conditions.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, and thank you for the project.
Thank you.
Good project.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Patrick Gonzalez. Site plan review application to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit in 339 Brick Kiln Road.
Just the publishing date, nothing more.
Deadline not till April eighth, so we have plenty of time.
That's fine.
Mr. Gonzalez, would you like Jed to explain your project?
We're not constructing anything, it's just leaving the wall.
Yeah, but you have to tell us about it.
I guess it was done once.
Madam Chair, if I may, just the notice.
Public notice for this project was published in the newspaper on 1/24/25.
And I apologize the notice that we gave, Paul didn't even leave the number of abutters. The file says that fifteen abutters were notified by regular mail.
How many?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
One five.
They don't seem to be here, they must be okay with it.
I talked to five of them, I think it was only seven.
Okay, let's, let's hear about it.
I love catching you.
Oh, yeah, well, you got to... Yeah, I'm just trying to make this thing right. It's been on, um, I don't even know how to use this thing. There we go. So, let's see. Yeah, this is the building right here that's in question. I own both of their properties, my wife and I. The accessory dwelling unit, we're trying to just make it legal or whatever, it's been there since 1970. This was where I grew up, right here, in the main house. My grandfather, my father built the house for my grandfather who had passed away. He had a house, sorry, excuse me, I need to buy some water here. He had a building fire on a building down the street, so my dad constructed this little cottage, if you will, and it's been there since 1970. So we're just trying to make it, we know we need housing, if you will, for everybody, so we're just trying to make it legal. It's been there, my grandfather lived there, family members have been in there over the years. This is the current residence now, so we just...
So you're not making any changes?
There's no, no changes. They have all the pictures, photos of the property, everything else.
And Melinda, it meets all the requirements?
Conforms to the size requirements?
It does.
Percentages, everything matches?
Bedrooms...
It's only one bedroom.
Well, from the pictures, it looks really tiny.
It is tiny.
Yeah.
It's very gentle.
It has...
It looks new.
On the staff report, it says the bedroom count needs to be addressed, has that been addressed?
It has. So I spent some time today with the building department verifying the building permit applications, and it did in fact predate the existence of the Water Resource Protection Relay District, which allows the applicant to maintain the number of bedrooms that they have on the site and not increase them. So they are allowed to maintain the four bedrooms that they have on the site. The other alternative, as you know, would have been to remove a bedroom in the main dwelling, but they do not need to do that because that clause is within your accessory dwelling unit by law.
I know, sir.
And yes, to your point, in the staff report, we've reviewed this thoroughly, you see that it meets all the requirements, and we recommend that you, until the application is presented.
Any questions?
I think that was the biggest issue.
Great.
So, thank you.
I have no problem with it. Do you want to make a motion?
Okay.
So I move that...
Are we voting on this or are we just gonna wait for...
Oh, positive vote, well, we have to say we want a positive motion.
Yeah, okay.
I move that we ask staff to prepare a positive motion.
I don't think we need to move to do that, we just need to agree.
I think, I think it provides some structure, I love. So, let's, let's do it.
He's a structuralist.
Structure's great.
We like to blame other people when we can, right?
Belt and suspenders, right?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Got to close the hearing.
So bored of waiting.
No, we never, we never...
Close site plan.
Right.
Project looks really nice. Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry you had to wait so long.
I like the series of photographs, thank you for those.
They're lovely, aren't they?
They are. There's one even realistic one. Okay, moving on. Josef Alves, site plan review application, apartment attached accessory dwelling at Seven Carlton Circle. Mr. Alves.
Good evening, everyone.
Madam Chair, if I may, the notice...
Paul.
Notice this project was published on 1/24/25.
And for the record, twenty-six abutters were notified by regular mail.
And nobody is alarmed?
It appears not.
Right.
Okay, my idea is, I have an existing garage in our house. We don't use the garage, and I like to transform the garage in one studio. So, right there is the garage and the idea for the studio is gonna be, the area of the garage is about the twenty-two by nineteen point seven. And I have on a, on a house, on an upper floor, I have two ba-, three bedrooms, and I have one bedroom, very small, so I want to take that bedroom out and, if it's possible, make this garage usable for, for the family because we don't use the garage and it's the one place we can use for the family, not just for my family, but my, I have a sister live way far, sometimes she come, and we can use them. So it's gonna be like a bathroom, and we have this existing stairs goes for the storage. So I like to keep this, that stairs. Right now, it's very, very tight, so have to be more, put in the cord, and put a door, has one door here, because on the storage, no, no heat, so put one door on the beginning of the stairs. So the bathroom and a little laundry, and shower, and a little kitchen, if want space for breakfast, and, and the idea is put like a sofa bed or something, somebody can sleep there.
How do you get into the laundry room? Where's the door to the laundry room?
Oh, the door of the laundry, oh, let me, that's here. Yeah, right, right here, it's gonna be the, the door for the laundry.
Ah.
Right here in the front.
Okay.
Yeah.
Might want to modify the drawing a bit to show that.
This is the existing, um, house, is the, this is the back of the house.
You look at how you get into the laundry room.
Right there is the, is thing, are you?
Bathroom. Oh, really?
Yeah, they just didn't put the doors in.
I know, I know. The doors need to be put in.
We'll need that for their building program.
Oh, for their building program, yeah.
So the living space is gonna be on the ground floor of the garage?
Yes.
And then upstairs is just gonna be storage?
Just storage.
It's gonna be unheated and, no, not, not a bedroom?
No.
And...
Oh, that, there is the, the frame for, for the, for the garage, for the floor of the garage. And right here, you can see on upper, upper floor, I have this bedroom, one oh two. So what I want to do, I want to take the door out, put drywall, and open, like, leave one space open, like, or maybe four feet, or inside the, the other bedroom, so I can make there like a walk-in closet.
So you'll notice in the staff report and referrals, the Board of Health had indicated that in order to approve the ADU, as you know, a bedroom would need to be removed from the inside of the house, which Mr. Alves was just describing. So that, that bedroom on the second floor, the smallest one, the proposal would be to remove the door, have a case opening, that way they could shift that bedroom to the accessory dwelling unit that will be in the garage.
And that it conforms to the requirements?
That's right.
So that's the only issue?
Yes. Yep.
Any questions?
Yeah, that issue's resolved, so, yeah.
Right. We're all set? Paul?
Yeah, I have a question. It would be helpful if your consultant put a locust plan on where this site is.
I knew that was gonna...
I thought originally Carlton Lane, which is a totally different area, but it's, it would be helpful to have a locust plan.
Okay.
Helpful with the plan?
Excuse me, do you know what he's referring to?
Yes, about the plan.
Yeah, no, but it's a little square that shows where in town this is with the two streets crossing, so we can find our way there. It's not part of your plan, it's just, it's a little map in the corner of your plan that lets people find where, where this is.
Oh, right, right.
You don't, you should have it on your plan.
Okay, okay.
It's called a locus, and it's usually up in the top right-hand corner, left-hand corner.
This, this square way right there, right?
Yeah, but it doesn't show across street.
Yeah.
It's like a mini-plan that goes in, ask your engineer to put on it, on the plan.
Okay.
So just, just for the record, the reason that the site plan is included in the application is just to show that they have adequate marketing.
Actually, we don't even do that, this is a by right, we're supposed to not make him do all the extra engineering. He doesn't have to do that.
That's right.
He can do this on paper by hand if he wanted to.
Nice to have.
Okay.
I agree.
You're all set.
We've passed with plans...
Yeah, we're way overboard.
On graph paper.
Yeah, this is fine.
It preceded GPS, you can look it up so easily.
I know, I was just trying to describe where locus, I didn't think you understood what that was. Not everyone knows that term.
I'm amazed we're getting the plans that we're getting with this.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Um, wait a minute, I cleaned up my agenda, I need to find it. How do I make a motion?
Are we ready to approve it?
You are.
Okay, you'll put in some...
It's got all the required authority.
Okay, so then I move that we ask our professional staff to prepare a motion for our next meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're all set. Thank you very much, it looks like a really good project. Good luck with it. Okay, last order of business for the night. David Clary, site plan review application to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit at fourteen Inlet Lane. We don't seem to have, are you Mr. Larry?
Dave.
Dave.
Well, finally, it's your turn.
My name's David Clary, I'm the applicant for Peter Mahoney, and what we're under, we have a construction built already, which is a two-car garage, and we just were, were planning on, or we would like to have permission to put a one-bedroom apartment upstairs in the, in the garage itself. And that's basically what I have.
Does it meet the requirements?
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
And if I may, I apologize for the notice. Sorry.
Okay, Paul, the notice?
Project was advertised in the enterprise on 1/24/25.
Slide, you don't know how to, I'm sorry, you don't know how to do it.
Many letters.
For the record, thirteen abutters were notified by regular mail.
Keep coming. Yeah, I wanted to see that.
Want this back?
So this is the existing building, it's already there?
Yes.
So we're not gonna have any questions about architecturally feeling the neighborhood or anything, that's all done.
Right.
And so all really about its formality, we have to do a site plan review because it's a detached, that's the only reason why we're doing this, right?
Do we have any issues?
Again, we ought to have a location, how do you get to that area? There's no road showing how you get down to that particular...
I'm sorry, I can't really hear you.
I don't think we require that, Paul, for ADUs.
Paul?
And he does have it.
On the main plan.
It's on the front page.
Yeah, but how do you get to it? I looked it up, it's not even in the record of where this road is. So I was just curious, how do you get to it, that's all.
We'll bring you directions.
Shouldn't have to go the ways.
Are there any other issues?
Bedroom is upstairs.
Can't get to there from this?
In this one, okay. My concern about that is, and I don't know whether it's a valid concern or not, but when you have an ADU, you're supposed to be able to have exit capacity, so I don't know how you could get that from a bedroom upstairs. We don't even have that in our normal houses, and I don't know whether that's part of what we need to be looking at.
Sure the building inspector will discuss that with him.
Yeah.
I just don't want somebody to be caught flat-footed.
No, it's, it could require a secondary means of egress, yeah.
Yeah.
We can follow up with the building commissioner tomorrow, just to make sure that, because this is, this is the first that I've seen, that's a two-story, two-level accessory dwelling unit. We can just follow up before we draft a, do a positive motion, if that's...
I would think it would be like any two-story house, you have a fire exit window.
Yeah.
And, and the sheet rock requirements, the building commissioner's gonna tell them you got double-level sheet rock because you have a garage with gasoline, there's all kinds of requirements to be put in a building, but that's not our job, that happens when he goes downstairs and meets with the building commissioner, and it's a whole new lesson.
I just hate to have people caught by surprise.
Right. Good to warn them.
This is not our review.
And the stairs lead to an outside exit on the first floor, so...
Right.
So are we ready? Okay, we have a motion.
So I would move that we ask our staff to provide us with a motion of approval at our next meeting, which is the 28th.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. Thought you said the 25th.
Let's check again, the 20th, my apologies.
Hey, Paul?
Paul?
There's your locus, right there.
Are you showing me?
What's in there?
And...
Can't wait till it's out.
No, you can't, because every time we do that, it comes back to bite us, and there are a couple of things that Jed has to check out.
Okay. So we're... So, we've got a positive motion next time.
For the next meeting, yes.
And we'll be all set.
Yeah.
Thank you, you don't necessarily have to attend that meeting?
And I just wanted to make a, a general comment, both this set of plans and the last set of plans were way more than we usually get. So, and we're not supposed to be that tough on, they should be complimented for the level of detail.
I'm not...
I know, I'm just making a general comment.
No, I think you're wonderful.
Yeah, they were, they're a lot better than we usually get, so I'm saying this is great. That's for other people that are planning this, you know?
Oh, I...
And this whole house is new, it's under construction.
Absolutely, it is.
Thank you.
Okay, nice.
Good luck.
Um, Mr. Clary, could I just ask you a question? Jed, I'll ask you, I can tell from the drawing, what kind of siding is that? Is that that cement siding? Shingles, that's what it looks like.
Well, from the photos...
Yeah, from the photos, it looks like it is, but I, I couldn't tell you offhand.
It looks like it.
Yeah.
Building elevation is my concern.
Yeah, it could be, could be cement shingles too, you know?
Whatever, it was just curiosity on my part. Okay, we are moving on. Planning board discussion, planning department, do we have a report?
We certainly do. So, um, we are happy to announce that, um, we attended, the planning department, along with other departments, attended a resilient Woods Hole workshop, uh, held by, and in conjunction with, uh, the institutions of WHOE, MBL, NOAA, et cetera. And in your packets, uh, this evening, we gave you, um, the agenda for the afternoon. Charlotte and Paul also attended this workshop. It's stock full of helpful information related to the resilient Woods Hole initiative, which started with the three institutions understanding that as sea level rise consistently occurs, they need to be proactive with planning for their buildings. But then realized that, you know, as they mentioned at the workshop, that the community at large, as Woods Hole, also needs to be included in that planning, um, initiative because it's gonna affect all of us at some point. And so, we were, um, you know, excited to be there for half of a day, we learned a lot about what they've done, um, we've learned a lot about what they plan to do in the future. And, um, you know, as a way to sort of plug the, um, process itself, they have developed a website, which we had hoped to bring up on the screen, but I'll just, um, talk about it, you can Google resilient Woods Hole, they have a lot of material there related to basically telling the story of where they started, where they are, and, you know, with the future of it. And of course, the, the town is, um, you know, central to that, because, as you know, we have an awful lot of coastline that may be subject to flooding in the near future, and, um, some of the initiatives that they've already started, dry floodproofing, wet floodproofing, et cetera, can be used throughout town, um, in susceptible areas, one of which is this building, uh, that we sit in tonight. Because their modeling indicates by 2070 that water could be around the parking lot and not in the basement, um, during some of their severe storms of this building. So, um, it was a fascinating event, um, we thank those institutions very much, and we look forward to participating, um, much more in, in the future.
It was interesting to me in several points of view, for those of you who actually work in, uh, real estate and building, you probably see the other people who send us reports, but I at least don't. And at this particular meeting, um, they were there. So, Mr. McConaty from the DPW, Matthew, I won't even get all the names, from Marine and I Environmental, who was willing to talk to me about an issue I cared about, the police, the fire department, um, they were all there and responsive to it, and answering questions in their area, so it was really an interesting meeting from several standpoints. One of the points that was made...
If I can just add to that, the town manager, assistant town manager there as well.
Correct.
And, and the member, the two members of Select Board.
Absolutely.
It was well-attended.
It was.
Yeah, Doug Brown and...
Was home here, is that they?
Were there. Um, and Mr. Renshaw spoke briefly, but it really was the organization's meeting, they have staffed it, they've done the work, and it was pointed out to them by townspeople that, um, wait a minute, with all of our shoreline, we all have the same problem. And in order to get public support for the funding that will be needed to confront and do anything about any of these issues, it's going to have to be at least town-wide, it's probably regional, because it will affect us all. So, that was one important thing that happened. And then the other was, you might remember a few years ago, there was a, I think it was called Coastal Resiliency Task Force? Um, in which the, uh, the Woods Hole organization played a large part, they had, um, hired consultants, it was a well-researched plan, and not all of their recommendations, but their recommendations differed from what was being said this week over WHOE, um, on a very important issue, and it's sort of the two sides of responding to coastal flooding. Do you retreat? If so, where do you retreat? When do you retreat? What do you take with you? What do you let go of the retreat? How much of it would be, um, a matter of, uh, public financing? How much of it would be a private financing? There are a lot of issues around that retreat, but it more or less said, you need to retreat because the water needs a place to go. And its natural storage areas, we already know where they are, and we ought to respect those. That was the first report. The people who have invested over 50 or 70 or more years in the buildings, in the infrastructure, in the entire, uh, community there, at least that particular community, retreat is not what they're thinking about, not. And they're thinking about, well, if I have to raise the road, uh, you have to raise the drains, because the bottom of the drain still goes out at a low area. They're looking at it really from a very different perspective. And those will be kind of the two, uh, main perspectives, I would think. So, in a way, it's, uh, it initiates the town wider planning on which way are we gonna go? My guess is it would wind up being a balance between the two, some one way, some other ways, depending on how densely inhabited.
Those areas are some of the highest tax rate properties that the town would lose that revenue.
Right.
Right, well, and the other thing is, why would the town pay for private property holders to harden their shoreline? You know, think about it. So, um, it's, there are a lot of questions involved in it, and they didn't really get, um, directly addressed this week, but I was very aware of the contrast between the two reports while we were listening, it was, it was good to go. Okay, is that, Paul?
If you recall, I sat on that committee for almost three years, I've attended every single meeting, and it was a good report, and I mentioned that they should read that report, it's on the website, because people file it and don't think about it, but there's some very good information on that website. And one of the key elements was getting a coastal resiliency coordinator, and my understanding is they've offered a position to two different people who went elsewhere, but...
Right.
But they're working toward that.
For this year.
But the other issue comes up, an overriding issue, in my opinion, is, it's the same issue that the water quality management has. If you have someone installing an IA system, benefits for that IA system is more than just to the homeowner, it's to the larger town area. And some of these benefits for coastal resiliency is the same area. The benefits accrue to people outside the immediate property owners, so there's a big issue there, and, uh, involves everything from transferred development rights, which we frequently talked about, but the town is concerned about a fairness doctrine on how you deal with some of those issues. And that's a, a big issue when it comes to the cost of these projects.
The last time that I can remember, that the American public had to deal with the issue of public assumption of private misfortune, when you think about private misfortune, the ocean's gonna eat your land. The last time the whole country had to deal with it was when it was trying to think about, well, how come the public has to pay for handicapped children? Not my kid. And there was an enormous back and forth over that, because like this, it's a very expensive thing to do. And it was the humanitarian concern, these are our children, this is our country, and so forth, and this is our land, you know, the same arguments are going to be made, and we'll, we'll start hearing them.
Surf Drive is gonna be a big one.
Yes.
Because it's long, it's low, it is the recognizable town beach where so many tourists go. And what do you do? Because it's gonna be...
And has a big...
And they burying all that new infrastructure along there.
Right, all kinds of infrastructure.
And that's, that's one of the key elements that we talked about in the workshop was, it's, it's not just about people's home, it's about the infrastructure that the town has put in place.
That infrastructure's all from Martha's Vineyard, isn't it?
Yeah.
That has nothing to do, that is all Martha's Vineyard connections.
That sewer?
No, what the Surf Drive, I shot a video of it, that I gave to the DPW, that, it's just extensive, it's much more than they did the last time, it's, and they have, I, it's a huge project.
Yeah, well, they're electrifying the whole island where they've been running on generators, diesel generators, forever.
But for...
So, now it's come, oh, yeah.
That must be really nice.
I, I didn't know that until recently, that they have...
I would like to know how much money's being spent on that project and affecting our town and our traffic for Martha's Vineyard to have their lights.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be underwater.
Yeah.
Well, your fellow citizens.
Yeah. But Pat, we go back to when we were talking about...
You ever try to get over there? Stay off my beach, private!
When we were talking about artificial reefs and things like that, to, to break up the, the water...
That's gonna have to happen.
Before it gets to the, to the beach, and I'm glad to see that they're building dunes, uh, right now. But more of that needs to be done. I, I think there are ways of soft armoring seashores, and we saw from Sandy that the areas that were naturally fortified with, uh, dunes and grasses and things like that, they survived, the hard armored places got...
Gone.
Washed away.
And washed away.
Or if you do the hard armoring out in the water, break, breaking it so that there's no way, that it kills some of the velocity.
Right.
Saves it.
Yeah.
That's probably what we're gonna be facing.
Yeah.
We're all gonna learn a lot more about it.
So, very quickly, um, this is the Resilient Woods Hole webpage, um, I'm just gonna hover over some of the key items here, I mean, you, um, again, this is just resilientwoods hole.org, um, you can learn more about what the project is, uh, the types of engagement opportunities, uh, that the project had, one of which is the climate walking trail, which is really neat down in Woods Hole, so you can take your phone and go to these, um, posts and scan a QR code and learn more about, um, that particular site and, uh, the resilient Woods Hole initiative. The projects that they've been working on, one of the, um, key ones is a story map, uh, so this is an ArcGIS platform, which is very easy to use, you just click and scroll, it just tells you the story about the entire project and some of the milestones that they've, um, accomplished. And then, um, importantly for this group, which I thought was very interesting, and I haven't had a chance to go through yet, um, is an analysis from Nutter, uh, legal team on the regulatory barriers that the town currently has, one of which is, uh, the zoning bylaws, some of the, um, restrictions within the zoning bylaws, so for example, is someone who's in a velocity zone, if they wanna reconstruct their home, they have to raise it, um, but they're constrained by the building height, so you take what they could normally do, um, but you don't allow them to exceed the 35-foot building height. Um, and so, they have to do more in a smaller area. Um, and so, those are some of the things that, uh, that legal team had put together, so we plan to go through that to identify some things that we might wanna consider in the future. So, there's a lot of resources here, um, and I encourage folks to, to check it out, and if they have any questions, feel free to contact the planning office, we're happy to walk through it with them.
Yeah, I think most of us went to the site plan, um, visit for the dock down there, didn't we all?
I don't know if all of us did.
I've been down there.
Most of us went.
Yeah.
I fish out of there, I didn't have to go see it, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, and heard, and they, the dates that they were telling us then, for, um, 12, no, 2030, 2050, 2070.
Right.
This plan goes only to 2070, like that one.
Yep.
I think that's okay.
We're gonna delay that one.
That's the problem, maybe gonna jerry out the community, none of us is. Okay, so, um, anything else from the planning board?
That's a, that's it, Paul.
That's it for you.
Would you like to, future agenda items, is this the right time?
Yep.
Uh, I think...
Committee report?
We can go back...
A lot of committee reports.
I'm sorry.
Committee reports.
We heard about coastal resiliency.
I have a committee report, but I have a question or a comment first.
Oh, okay.
I wasn't able to attend, uh, the session in Woods Hole, but, but was the topic for Woods Hole only, or was it for the town of Falmouth in general?
Woods Hole only, right.
What about the rest of us?
Well, their money's doing it.
That was the point of everyone who was not an employee at Woods Hole.
Okay.
So, the select board, the planning board, the police, the fire, the everybody else's, wait a minute.
Okay.
And they, they agreed that if there's ever going to build a consensus to help them out with this, it has to be all of us, absolutely. In fact, I think it was the first thing people jumped on.
Okay. All right, that was my question, thank you for the answer. And for committee report, uh, this Thursday, uh, for the Cape Cod Commission, we're gonna have a virtual meeting, uh, 3 o'clock, and the topic is Cape Cod freshwater strategy. I'll just read, the, the staff is going to present the draft for the Cape Cod freshwater strategy, which is a plan intended to address protection and restoration of freshwater ponds and lakes in the Cape Cod region. Commission members will discuss the presentation, and may ask questions, and the general public can also, uh, ask questions and make comments.
Is that gonna be a Zoom?
Yes.
And where can we find the link?
Just go to the, the Cape Cod Commission web, website.
Oh, thank you.
They've, they've been studying, uh, you know, there's almost, I think it's 980 ponds on Cape Cod, freshwater ponds, and so far, they've studied over, they've, with another group, over 500 of them. This is a, the staff report update.
I live right next to an eight-acre town pond. If it were 10 acres, they would study it, but they don't, they have a cutoff. That's not nice.
Well, you can ask that question.
I will, because I would think it's all about the water table coming right up, same thing.
Yeah.
And if you let it get poisoned here, it'll affect over, right?
Madam Chair, uh, to answer your question, um, if you go to the Cape Cod Commission website, click on meeting notices, scroll down, uh, they've got, um, instructions how to join the virtual meeting, and then this is the, uh, meeting that John was just referencing, so you can click on that, and you can actually join right from that, um, that Zoom link.
Does that say February 13th?
February 13th.
Yes, Thursday, 13th.
This is the Cape Cod Commission. So, just click on meeting, meeting notices, uh, on the top right of the homepage, and it'll bring you to the, uh, the list of meetings.
John, do you recall when you were talking about your work on the Cape Cod Commission? Uh, you reported that the Cape Cod Commission approved Beretex and Horizon's application for a monopole, but they reserved judgment, leaving it to the local ZBA to consider aesthetic impact. I am here to report to you that the ZBA did not consider that. They felt that the Cape Cod Commission had done a very thorough job, and they did not have to do much after that, just to let you know.
Well, if I was still on the ZBA, maybe I would've had a different opinion for you, but I'm not.
Well, just in case you have friends over there. So...
One other committee. I, uh, was asked to make a presentation to the Select Board last night on the Falmouth 250, it was a very, very brief presentation, talking about the organization, talking about overall the kinds of things we wanna do, and some specific activities are being implemented.
And you did a good job, did you bring the proclamation?
That's next to you.
Ah, okay, here it is, you remember?
That's announcements, isn't it? You didn't get to it yet.
Oh, is that the announcement? Wait a minute.
You done with committee reports?
You have one?
No.
No.
Oh.
So now it's announcements.
I think we're done. Anybody else? Our creation committee, what else?
I want to talk about new agenda items. Is that, is this the appropriate time?
I know, we're apparently doing announcements.
Just going to read the.
And here we have our proclamation that Paul drafted very nicely, because he discovered that it's our 100th birthday as a planning office, and that we were the fourth on the Cape, we were among the first 10 in Massachusetts, and we, Falmouth, decided to have a planning board. They voted to have a planning board just shortly after the state had enabling legislation to create planning boards and say what it was we were supposed to be doing. So Falmouth hopped right on it. They've been on it ever since. If we had had time, we would have been able to pick out our milestones, because Falmouth actually has kept ahead of a number of issues reasonably well. Not 100%, but reasonably well. So thank you, Paul, for doing this proclamation, and thank you for your work on the 250th anniversary. I understand that it's been somewhat contentious, because there's a problem with the dates. Right. So anyone who wants to look at this, I'm going to hand it down. It was, I don't know who did it up so nicely. Must have been the town.
Whereas is.
Place to put it.
Ah, where are we going to put it?
I have a suggestion. I'd mention it to you. There's a plaque downstairs for consultants who did a project for the town, and it was awarded to the DPW. And it's more of an advertisement for the consultant than it is for anything else that belongs in DPW, and maybe that could go in the place. It's just down the hall from Collector's Office, on the right-hand side.
Why wouldn't we put it right outside the town manager's office? This is kudo for the entire town.
Don't hide it in here, in our office. Put it down there.
The planning office was obviously involved at some point, but it's really recognizing the whole town having done this.
It's above my pay grade.
Well, who'll hand it along to a more superior pay grade?
I'll do what I can.
Jim?
Yes. I would like to have an agenda item in the future to talk about transferred development rights. We've kicked it around and kicked it around and kicked it around, and I think we should at least put it on a planning. Is it going to be this year? Are we going to start talking about it for six months, or pick a target time, and let's start putting together issues for it?
Sure.
Okay, and we were going to begin thinking about lighting regulations.
Correct. Yep.
I got a little announcement, too. I have become, I've seen some FCTV's introductions to all the ZBA planning board selectmen. They redid the television sides, and I think it's you, Paul. I think they're showing you in your park. I think over there, they've got a picture of the park, and I think you were walking there, doing all kinds of work, and there's somebody that wasn't a town employee and looking at the side. I think you could be in the picture.
That's great.
It's a quick little flash, and I know about, because they, I volunteered, I did probably 20, two or three hours of videos of all the town's buildings, and I gave them to the FCTV, and they're using some of my aerial work in their town's presentation. So you can't really tell what it is. It flashes by so quickly, you won't notice it. But anything that's up in the air, that's for me.
Okay, great. Great, thank you.
Well, if you want to follow up on that, the, I don't know what picture you're talking about.
You haven't seen it. It's, I saw it today for the first time.
Anyway, the bids are out for the platform, and there was a pre-bid meeting two weeks ago. I think you attended that as well.
I did, yep.
And there've been a number of requests for clarifications, but nothing major, according to the town engineer. And the bids are due on the 14th of this month. So we'll have a better handle on who's interested, what's going to cost. My concern is, a lot of wood comes from Canada, and I don't know what that's going to do to the cost.
Right, who knows what's going to happen next. But boy, this is, you have to be really satisfied to see what's finally coming around.
Well, I think Jeremiah Pearson and his crew are doing a fantastic job of that park.
I like the park.
And he doesn't even fish.
I wrote a letter to, on behalf of the town, to Dylan Fernandez, because he was the one who got the money for the park from the Department of Environment Recreation.
Thanks, Ricky Law.
So he's, 300 committee bought that land from the bank and donated to the town specifically for the park. But I redid the map showing what they're doing in the park with the help of Jeremiah, and I put that in the kiosk, if you want to look at it. But it shows what the elements are, because it was just a sketch that was in there initially. So that's been updated. So hopefully, things can get moving this spring.
Excellent, excellent. This is all good news.
Another one for future agenda?
Yeah.
I still want to have a housing brainstorming session here, because, you know, we talk about build, baby, build, and we're not going to get out of this just by building more and bigger housing units. We've got to come up with some other creative ways of utilizing existing structures in town, whether it's private homes, whether it's public buildings, whatever. But I think we need to get that out, because, you know, I've been driving to Hyannis a lot lately, and you look at these big, huge apartment buildings there, housing isn't any cheaper in Hyannis than it is here. So it hasn't solved the problem.
It's just made more of it there.
And it's just, and who are we building for? Every Saturday morning, I'm down the Woods Hole boat shop, and it's all 20-somethings now. And that's one of the big topics, is housing, and how this one couple's saying, we're giving it five years, and then we're out of here. And these are people working in small businesses, they're working for the institutes. And they're saying, you know, we look at these housing, the apartment buildings going up, we can't afford to live in those.
Right.
So, you know, we've got to come up with other ways of doing it besides just building big, huge buildings.
Well, the other thing to look at down in Hyannis is, how does that appeal to you, that look?
Right. And that's the other thing. You know, we're going to destroy the village in order to save it? I mean.
I think part of it, I know we shouldn't discuss it now, but part of it is just advertising, what's possible under our existing bylaws? Boarding houses, rooming houses. There are a lot of arrangements that people think of and think, we need a bylaw like that. Well, we have a bylaw like a lot of that. So just making the information available. Is there anything else we want future agenda items on?
Make a motion adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.